Especially between now and 6:30.
Yeah, especially between now and 6:30, especially. So the first item relates to the appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are set up for interviews on 5th in the evening. Question is, do you want to interview all of these folks or not? I do think that we've got to note that John Doherty was no longer interested, is that correct?
That's correct, he hasn't drawn his application. Now there are eight applicants for five openings.
We have eight applicants for five positions. Do you want to interview them?
I would suggest that we interview only the new candidates, the ones that are not currently on. Is that what you're referring to, or are you just thinking all of them?
That's the open question.
I think we all know our current planning commissioner, I feel like I do.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, why don't we schedule then interviews only with the new candidates, but make sure that we advise the incumbents that they shouldn't read anything into that, it's just that council feels like they know who they are, there's no need to have another review.
Brad? So that means we have five applicants for three, no. How many, how many new applicants do we have?
We have, let's see, now that we have eight, we have five new applicants and the three incumbents who are live. So we have eight applications, there are five openings. For the three incumbents, their terms are up.
Yeah.
And then we have two vacancies that will fill the unexpired term.
Okay. Okay. Just another follow-up, I guess, on the questions to be asked of the interviewees, you know, kind of developing a set of questions. I don't know if that's the city attorneys?
In the past, the city attorney has done that, are you willing?
Sure, I think actually we have a, Karen, we may have even already provided you with a list of kind of questions for this. I know we have, we did the last time around, I'm not so sure there's much of a, gonna be much of a difference. I'll talk to our planning attorney who had kind of helped me do this last time around.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can come up some different questions.
I watch them.
Ooh, good idea, we'd be like, so it would be like cheating on the test. You don't want to do that. Okay, let's do that, we can do that.
That's a good idea.
I just want to clarify, January 5th is the interview day? Yes.
And the time?
Time is, what time Karen?
I believe you said 5:00 or 5:30, and I will verify.
Okay. Will you send out an email to everybody just as a reminder?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, council appointments to intergovernmental agencies, we have information in the backup. There are more than half a dozen or so appointments that we need to make, there are another couple of dozen that are reviewed, and so why don't we just go through and see if those, particularly on the ones where the appointments need to be made, if the current representative wants to continue to do that, and if we're fine with that, so, does that work? All right, first one is Accelerate Colorado, Barb, you are there, do you want to continue?
I'd like to.
Any objection to Barb, continue.
Can I ask a question too? This Aurora Home, it has my name, but I think it's Molly.
Yes, she's been working.
Just been doing it, so I just wanted to make sure, unless, if she doesn't fall out last, or do you want to continue on Aurora Home?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If we're talking about Aurora Home, or?
No.
Okay.
We're talking about appointments, we're not talking about the organization.
Okay, are we talking about, okay, I am currently on Aurora Home operations, and I think we just wanted to make sure that that went through.
Yes. Yeah.
That's a, yeah, that's maybe, that's not even technically something we review, so.
Right, yes, when I talked with you, you wanted to make sure that people were even on the operation, so I want to make that known.
I can't hear you, sorry.
Oh, Operations Committee of the Aurora Home, it's a subcommittee.
Are you on it?
Yeah.
Sir.
And are you still on Mark?
No, and I'm not working off the board lists, I'm working off of the commentary sheet that listed the appointments, page 26 and 27. Adams County Economic Development, Reenie is currently the representative, I'm the alternate, anybody else interested? Everybody fine? Rappow County Community Corrections Board, we need to replace Scott Newhouse. Suggestions, or is that one that we should defer and look for suggestions?
I would suggest Terry or Skip or somebody make that suggestion.
Why don't you give us a recommendation?
We take you to it.
Aurora Economic Development Council, terms for Marcia and Skip Noe expire this month, so we need to take, make, make two appointments.
And I believe mine expires because I was chair of PDR, and I believe that was why I was chair of PDR, Sally's on the A D C, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, but that's not why you, actually, when you, actually, when you, actually, when you chair PDR, you were able to serve two seats from the board, so that you didn't mess with your term. You were currently a board member, and then you got to be an ex officio member from being chair of PDR, so you were technically serving two hats, and when you were, when you stopped serving as chair, then you just went back to your regular board position, and it didn't interrupt your term.
Okay, but now my term's up?
No, your term's, yeah, now your term's up.
Okay. So first question is, do you two wish to continue?
Yes.
Second question is, is somebody else interested? Molly?
I am very much so, thank you.
Or which?
A D C.
Well, there are two seats. Are you trying to replace somebody, or are you just trying to?
Oh, no, I would like the seat that expires in a year.
Fifteen?
Well, we're not doing 15, we're doing 14. The two that expire in 14 are Marcia and Skip.
And they're not renewing their terms?
They are both interested in renewing it.
Oh, they are, all right, then, so am I.
Okay, I can help.
Bob? Yes. I'm gonna be stepping off of the A D C board, so there's gonna be an opening.
When are you gonna do that?
Effective yesterday. I've not heard back, I sent an email, but it was something, so.
Okay.
Okay, then if Marcia and Skip are both interested, we could reappoint both of them, and if Bob's getting off, we've got another vacancy, is there anyone other than Molly who is interested? All right, any problems with Molly filling Bob's vacancy? Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob, thank you for your service, Bob.
Mile High Behavioral Healthcare Commandant's Crisis Center, Bob Legere, one-year term limit, January through December. Do you want to continue, Bob?
That's like a year-to-year term limit, right? Because I've been there two and a half or three years.
Yeah, we should be.
Unless someone wants to fight me for it, I'll stay on.
Anybody want to fight Bob to be appointed for another year?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think it would be great, because in talking to, just so you know, in talking to Bob Dorshimer, he has commended you for the work that you're doing. So I think that's, thank you.
If I could also, everything I hear is a chief, just amazing, behind-the-scenes miracle worker, so, yeah, we'll stay on.
Very appreciated. I am appreciated, see Bob?
Thank you.
You're finding out how the other one lives.
That's pretty high, that's the high honor.
It's gonna make you blush.
All right, FRA, Sally Moni's term expires this month. I have not heard anything that would indicate she does not want to continue serving. In fact, I think she's just got herself elected secretary of board, so, but is there anyone else interested? Okay.
We could make a nervous break. I would be happy.
Sally will continue. Spirit of Aurora, Debbie's term expires, or expired, we need to?
I nominate Debbie.
Okay. Well, I think we're in the middle of the transition.
A lot of changes.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Anybody else interested? Objections, Debbie, you're reappointed. We are to review a couple of dozen appointments, even though other entities may make the appointments and we do not, we're still supposed to review them.
Isn't that why don't?
Not anymore.
Adams County Aging Network, Rene Keener, any objections to continuing? No.
Do we have at least an attendance record, or some kind of indication that the person is contributing on Aurora's behalf?
If you want that, we can get that.
I just think that we should at least have some acknowledgement of their participation in a credible manner.
Can we get the attendance record from?
I don't want to question their involvement, I just want to make sure they're going, and that we know that they're active.
Well, but we don't have it, so we have to request it.
I know, I'm just asking.
Adams County Airport Coordinating Committee.
I think Stephen and I should step off this, and let somebody else, that'd really scare the heck out of them.
Actually, this, this, this is almost a superfluous committee now, because this committee was in place before the county took over the operations of the airport, and the county is still now in charge of the operations of the airport. This committee goes back to when there was an airport, a separate airport authority. So should we find out whether or not this is still needed?
So this is for Front Range Airport.
Right.
So, yeah, okay, so we should, if we're gonna continue that, we should stay that instead of Adams County Airport, but anyway, if you think it should?
Let's find out, let's find out.
What is the one that, that, because there's two committees that, that deal with in Adams County, because there's the ACC, and then there's?
There's a advisor, there's a Front Range Airport Advisory Committee, but that's appointed by the county commissioners.
Right, but the Adams County Coordinating Committee that has been, that, isn't that the one that's three from Denver and three from Adams County?
Oh, this is, oh, oh, okay, this is the other thing.
This is the?
This is the Denver Committee.
Yeah.
Sorry, never mind.
Yeah, this is the three from Denver.
Right.
And three from Adams County, and basically it's Steve, a county commissioner.
Yeah.
And somebody from Commerce City. So I'm, I'm not really part of that committee.
No, this is the bigger committee, and you are part of it.
I'm part of the bigger committee.
That's what this is.
I'm not part of, okay, yeah.
Sorry, this is the committee that's been meeting regularly with Denver for the last two years, and our brains are so fried that we can't remember.
And that's why I think we should sit down and let you?
Slip down, we have a couple of turds smoking.
Yeah. We ought to continue, I suppose.
I think so.
Any objection to that? All right. Romel Health, Barbara Shannon Bannister.
I will tell you, she attends very well, and Marcia can tell you that too, because she's on that board.
She's there forever.
She is there.
Any objection to Barbara, continue. Aurora Public Schools Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Brad Pierce, right now.
This, I was on a committee of APS, John Berry was superintendent, but it wasn't the bond oversight committee, it was just a budget committee, so.
This bond oversight committee Legere was on, and I followed him on that also, and I highly recommended somebody else take over, and none of us did.
So you got appointed, what, that you weren't here?
Yeah, I missed the meeting, so, I'm beyond there, I guess, so, if they, if they still meet, I mean, it was?
It was only quarterly.
Yeah.
And?
I don't think it's, I don't think they have a committee like?
Let's, let's make sure there's still a committee. If there is, Brad will do it.
I thought they disbanded, I mean, the bonds are all done, the money's all spent.
Let's just make sure, if there is a committee, Brad's doing it, if there isn't, take it out of the list. Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Committee, Brad, you do want to continue?
Yep, I'll stay there.
Everybody okay with that? Dr. Cox, Bob Roth, Reenie Peterson, okay? Okay, you're reappointed.
I'm not sure of what, Bob, now that you?
E-470, Steve Hogan, Bob Broome. I'm sure Bob would want to continue as an alternate, but Bob's term limited, and we ought to have somebody ready to step in before his term goes out, because there are some bigger things that are gonna be happening, so, could we?
If he doesn't want to do it, I'd like to do it.
All right, let's, let's put a hold on this, see what Bob thinks. If he wants to continue fine, or maybe for part of the year. Barb has an interest in being the alternate, any, anybody else interested? If Bob is not?
How often do they meet? How often do they meet?
Twice a month.
What, you dropped out, I'm interested.
Okay.
If Bob says no, I might be interested in the alternate.
Okay, then we'll have to bring that one back. Let's check Bob, we've got two council members who are interested, if he's not, so we'll bring that one back. Highline Working Group, Bob Legere, Pat Schuler, are we okay?
Still good, yeah.
I just have a question. Tom Ross, Mike Ross, who formed that new group, does that need to have a place for an elected, okay, so we don't need to be there?
That's a foundation.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have any money, so.
Okay.
All right, Lowry Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors.
They're kind of winding down, aren't they?
They are, but it's my understanding they still meet. I, I had appointed Richard Mestus and Don Lindeman, I get to appoint two members, I appointed them, we set up Bob Watkins to be an ex officio, show up.
Yeah.
Anybody okay, comfortable with those? All right. A Lowry Community Advisory Committee, same thing, we get seven?
I'm on it, I hardly ever go, because Brad goes, and, but we keep on canceling meetings, and?
This is, this is the board where the Aurora Mayor appoints seven people, and the Denver Mayor appoints 14, so, but yeah, we haven't had many meetings lately.
Well, I'll fail.
Okay. You're happy staying on?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then the, also the Lowry Coordinating Committee, Marcia, Molly, Sally, whom I have appointed, you all want to continue?
They never meet.
Okay.
It's crazy. It's needed.
I think we've met like three years forward, and three years.
Maybe it would be a good idea if the next time there's a meeting, the question is asked as to whether or not the group needs to continue, so we can get an answer. The Metro North Chamber of Commerce Development Council, Debbie, you're on that.
I'm on it, and now that I have a different job, I think I can get there more, more frequently, I'm not there often.
So you want to continue?
Yeah.
All right. Everybody comfortable with that?
It's a long drive.
Noes, Brad, and Reenie, you both want to be there?
Yeah, since I'm president, I guess I have to.
Yeah.
Oh, you can always advocate, yeah.
I knew Barb was on the meeting.
Yeah, that's right, you know, because what are you, secretary or?
And then finally, I-70 Regional Economic Advantage Partnership, Brad is there.
Yep, in fact, the board, the board re-elected me back on for 2015 anyways.
Okay. So we're going to check on the Rappow County Community Corrections Board, and we're going to check on E-470 alternate, is there anything else that we were gonna check?
The bond oversight.
Yeah, the APS bond oversight.
Oh, yeah, the oversight committee. So if we could check on those and then bring them back, first meeting in January? Okay, that covers the appointments to intergovernmental agencies.
One, one commenter.
Go ahead, Brad.
On the spreadsheet, the contact person for I-70 REIT is different now, it's not Lois Buckman anymore, I'll have to send you the new contact info for the new person.
Okay.
Also on the spreadsheet, I'm sure that this will fall together anyway, but it has, on urban drainage, it will have both myself and Debbie's names, and I'm sure my name will fall off next month, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
All right, issue update, just one thing that I have real quick, if you all remember, DAVA won a national award from the President's Committee on the Arts and Humanities, here is a booklet that came out, and there are yellow piece things on each page, in case you want to take a look at it. Anything else, or issue update at the moment?
We should clap for DAVA, they should grow.
Yeah, they do.
With that, the, the other charts, the elected officials involved.
Well, most of those, we don't make the appointment, the organization makes the appointment.
I have a question on someone else, though.
Okay.
Could I continue? Okay, on AdCom, is, since we're having a new, a new year starting, is there any way we can request them to have their meetings on a different evening? The fourth Wednesday at 6:30, there are three of us here that can't vote those, because we're on another board meeting.
We can request, I wouldn't be optimistic.
Well, that's, I'm not, but.
But we can request, yes.
Okay, and then I had something else, NLC, subcommittees, my, I'm not on there, and I should be on there for transportation and infrastructure.
That's correct.
And, and Visit Aurora, they don't have any openings, is that correct?
I don't know if they have openings, but again, they make the appointment.
Yeah.
We don't make the appointment, Visit Aurora.
And I was asking about the rack, I didn't think you were on the rack, I thought it was given to somebody else.
It is, it's been, Bob Broome got the appointment.
Yeah.
Yep, so I should be off there.
It's on my head.
Okay, thank you, Molly.
Thank you, I was asked on behalf of Quality of Life from our meeting last month to let you know, there are three or four vacancies on the Human Relations Commission, if people have people that they would like to recommend apply, they should apply, go through the process, but there are several vacancies on that one. And we also saw the preliminary plans for, remember back in the olden days in the budget, we put some money in for a neighborhood cleanup program, and we looked at the plans for how that would roll out, it'll be more detailed when you see the Quality of Life minutes, we're, excuse me, gonna pass around the backup from the committee if you want to take a quick glance now. The idea is, each of the six boards would have $10,000, there would be an application process, neighbors could band together and do work to improve their neighborhood, so, sorry at large, guys, it doesn't quite seem fair, you should have your own pot as well, but I'm gonna go ahead and pass this around for anybody that wants to know how that turned out, I'm sure we'll have opportunity, is it coming back to the agenda to AdCom?
It's actually coming to study session in January.
January.
Yeah, January.
All right, we'll take a quick look at it now, and then we'll see it in January, you'll know what it's about.
Can I make one comment?
Barb?
On the urban drainage, it doesn't change in December, I believe it changes in January. You, you go in the December meeting, and then?
We already have.
And Debbie takes over in January, yeah.
That's fine.
Here it says, changes in December, so it does change in, in January.
I'm going to change this, I started that December meeting.
Yeah, but we've, we've kind of changed the rules so that everybody gets the opportunity.
Bob, we'll let you get settled, but you are the focus of a question, so, have a seat.
No.
You did that well.
Um, we just went through the reappointments, the appointments and reappointments, and the question was regarding E-470, whether you wanted to continue as the alternate and do that all year, or part of the year, or if you wanted to get on.
I'll stay on.
You want to stay on? All right, then that answers that one, you'll stay on as the alternate. Last one of you guys wants to challenge?
No.
Okay, all right, if Bob stays on, it's the alternate. All right, anything else for issue update? Next is consent calendar, 2A through D, any questions or issues, or anybody want to talk about any one of those here, or do we just send them to the agenda?
Bob? I just have a comment about item B on special taxes on retail marijuana.
Okay.
There's a new, there's a new concept in the commercial real estate industry, and it's condos for growing pot, and I don't even know if that's allowed by state law, but, and maybe it requires some changes, but the, the idea is, people that don't want to grow their personal pot at home, you know, there's big warehouse that's condominiumized, and you buy your little section of grow, and I, I'm guessing that is something the legislature would have to approve.
No, of course not.
But it's just, it's a new concept that's coming out, and the question would be, how do you? How do you regulate?
It's a different type of community garden.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, new concept of community garden, I like that.
That is a no-no, that's a no-no.
But yeah, that's something that?
It's not allowed by state law now, because you can only grow it in your home.
You only have six plants that you can grow.
So anyway, ready for the agenda?
We'll keep an eye out for that one.
I'll take on to that one. Where on our income will we find the marijuana tax revenue?
So on, we, I just sent out on Friday the October report, it's included in the revenue section, we only had two businesses open for a partial time in October, it was about $12,000 for October, we'll be sending out here, I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll send out the November numbers, we have a few more businesses up and running, but each month, what we'll do is, in the revenue section, we'll specifically call that out of the monthly financial report.
So I didn't see that called out, so.
Yeah, it's still a sales tax revenue, it would be reported in that line, but we'll call out how much that is.
Sales tax, yeah, thank you.
Any objection to sending 2A through D forward? Okay, 3A, consideration of appointments due, independent review board.
Just, in your packet was the list of the recommended, actually, there are 21 individuals originally, there were, there was 20 called for, but we ended up with a tie, and the committee worked on the actual appointments, if you recall. If you recall, these folks will be used for a time to serve on the independent review board panel. The council talked about this before. The idea was you did not have to reside in Aurora, which we're expecting you to reside or work in Aurora. And then you, the council also was not going to apply this whole issue about being a registered voter to the appointees, to this board. And then there would be three-year staggered terms was the assumption, that these folks would be the initial appointees. We draw lots to determine the, the initial staggering, but it would be staggered so the folks.
For the next year.
Yeah, exactly. So, so the real question is whether the council wants to move this forward, or whether you have other work you want to do on the, on the list of 21 names that's on the list.
I don't see any hands going up. Are you comfortable with, Molly?
I haven't quite formulated my question yet.
Well, we'll kill a little more time.
I think it's more process-wise. No fault with the committee doing this. It seems like we're not, we're missing something. We're not getting as much of thorough review as all, but I can't, I can't see how we also could have all done it either. Tell me how it worked in committee, tell me why that was there.
What happened was the three of us on committee got a stack of names with an application. And we went through, we went through all the applications. And I can't remember, we, we rated 1 through 20.
Did you have criteria, or what were you looking, did you have the names on it?
Everybody had the names on them, whatever. And, I mean, I don't want to speak for Bob or Brad, but I just went through the resumes, and that's how I did it. And then unbeknownst to any of us, we turned in our sheets to Skip, and then Skip added all of them, did whatever, and figured out the ranking from what Bob and Brad and I did.
So if a person didn't get named, or didn't get named by everybody, there was, there were points put in there for somebody that was, got no mention. So if two committee members mentioned one person, not the third, we added points because it was the lowest point total, so we had to add points. But this is really just a formula applied to the 20 ranking of the, of the committee members. And we actually listed ties, because there are a number of folks who had the same number of points based on that, that ranking. That's how we ended up at 21, 20.
It's the top 20?
The top 20.
Even though they have the lowest number of points?
That's right.
Which is why.
Because if you rank, if you think about it, you rank this person number one, they get one point.
I see.
And you rank this person number 20, they get 20 points, so the lowest score.
The highest number is the lowest score.
Lowest grade.
Yeah. So what were your criteria? I mean, I'm not sure if this was a popularity contest, or do these folks, do they write anything about what they're going to contribute to the process? This has never been done before? How do we guess that they're qualified thoughtful candidates?
Say how I did it. I mean, there were over 50 applicants, and I read all of the applications and the resumes. And some of the people I knew from the community, and others I didn't. And we had to pick our top 20 out of 50-plus. So, what criteria did I use?
Just the resumes?
Well, it wasn't that difficult when you have 50.
Yeah.
And you're picking 20. And, you know, maybe 15 of them you know from some involvement in the community, so.
And so then that made you pick them or not? I guess I'm trying to understand what.
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Well, some of them had kind of public safety, they were involved in either the police cases in police academy or the city or whatever, you know. And then, and remind me, Skip, I think of these 20, only four get picked at a time for the board, for the review.
That's correct.
So you've got 16 other people kind of waiting there.
Sorry, they're kind of waiting there tomorrow.
Yeah.
And do we have a synopsis of the ward's gender, ethnicity? Kind of a, what do the 20 look like on one page instead of on 20 pages?
Well, as you, we did not, or, no, can we ask what the ethnicity of the individuals are? We obviously have the gender of the folks, which is obvious on all the forms. And the ward numbers are actually on all the applications.
Right, right. So we've adapted to the task ourselves.
Bob, and I would also comment, you know, from a standpoint of criteria, I, I looked at these applicants similar to how I looked at civil service committees. So kind of the same, not the same role, but just similar atmosphere.
I appreciate you doing the work. I was just curious as to what went into it and how we wound up with these. That's all. Got it. Thank you.
Ready to send this forward? Okay. 3B, trash enclosures. Bob?
Yes, I, I have some concerns about this ordinance. And I, I've been following this since the early stages and, you know, reading the minutes that have come out of the policy committee. And it looked like this was going to be, you know, just applying to multifamily housing where it abuts or is contiguous to single family. And the ordinance I see coming in front of me applies to all commercial real estate everywhere. And so I've got some serious concerns about unintended consequences. And especially in Northwest Aurora and, you know, the Colfax corridor, section of Ward 2. Because when it talks here about trash enclosures shall be constructed of material of the same or similar nature as the material used to construct principal buildings. If I've got a brick building built in 1949 in Northwest Aurora on the alley, and I go to do some type of application that requires compliance with the code, or maybe even whether I do that or not, according to the way this is written, you just have to comply. I would then have to build a $4,000 brick enclosure. And then the trash company would say, well, sorry, we can't get the truck to your trash anymore, so we're not going to pick it up. So my question is, you know, does, I mean, can we go, I don't know what we need to do. I'm happy to work with the city attorney, you know.
I was the person that sort of started this, and I truly meant it to be multifamily adjacent to single family. And then I missed the P E D R meeting because that was the day I finally got in to see the doctor about my back. So I missed the P E D R meeting when we actually talked about it, so I didn't see how.
No, you were there. You were there.
It didn't say all this then. It was.
We didn't discuss it that day. You were there.
But anyway, I absolutely.
Hold on, one at a time.
There was no intention to apply retroactively or to apply to commercial all over. It truly was, if you're a multifamily here and you're a single family here, there's going to be a trash bin here, and how can you guys get along? That's all it was supposed to be. So how it grew into, but I would have a legitimate concern too. I don't want all that.
I've got. Reenie and then Bob.
I just want to state that I'm really not supportive of this. You know, I can see where in residential, looking on and seeing some of this trash might be a problem. The way that this ordinance is written, I'm not in support of it.
Bob? And I, I thought I read in the minutes that the last policy committee that it came out of that, you know, you're going to work on it, work on the final language. So the question to Jim is, can this be modified to be multifamily to single family?
Yes, well, I, we've been trying to respond to the P E D R on this. And if that's the intent of P E D R, to just apply it to multifamily, we'd be happy to do that. This discussion is generated from council, and we'd like to reflect what council is directing us to do on this.
Was really the notion of looking outside the property line when you're approving land?
Yeah.
Look up and see, oh, look, it's next to a house. We should take that into consideration.
Yeah, and that's the essential.
That was what you were, what we're going to start left committee as?
Bob? And is this intended to apply prospectively, like to new developments, or you're not trying to go back?
I don't think we can go retroactive. There's extraordinary orders.
It's supposed to apply to new trash enclosures.
Hold on, one at a time. Why don't we ask the city attorney to answer that question? Since it's a legal question. And then.
It, it'll only apply prospectively. Certainly, I'm happy to add language to the body of the ordinance, we'll make that crystal clear. And that's always a good change. And certainly, whatever council desires, we can, we can put the language in that we need to put in to make sure that we capture what the intent was of council member Mark and the committee.
Bob? I have one other question. And it's in paragraph B, section 1, paragraph B, where it says, for paragraph C, "Trash enclosures should be located away from residential uses." The word "should" is not must, it's not shall. Should, is that intended to give flexibility to code enforcement?
Well, really, to, this applies to new trash enclosures. And there are some situations where you could have, you know, a wall or a building or a strip of landscaping that does provide that, that buffer that we're talking about. And that would provide sufficient barriers to a, to a residential use that's next door. So I was trying, trying, we were trying to provide a little bit of flexibility. Okay. Marshers?
Thank you. Yeah, this came about because of one, one particular incident where, and Molly brought it forward, where the person looked out the backyard and there's the dumpster right at the end of the door. It's a very unusual circumstance where this dumpster is that affects this homeowner. So, yeah, we, we did ask to make it flexible. And because of the trucks, you can't, you can't make a strict rule so trucks can't get in or whatever. Actually, my idea of constructing the same or similar, because most trash, they're cinder block, aren't they? Cinder block or wood or something like that that should be similar to the building. I, I had no way envisioned it to be the same brick as the building or whatever. It's just something to blend it in is what I envisioned.
Thank you, Marshall. I think the whole notion was related to, it never should have been approved. And so how did it get approved? Well, if you look at just the postage stamp, this is what's getting approved. There's no requirement that says you should think about where it's going and how it's going to fit in. So it was intended solely to be multifam to single family. Think about how that's going to work. And in that one case, it sure did. And it's caused extraordinary type of expense.
So we did want to give code enforcement or building a little flexibility to, to look at the, the trash and the neighborhood and where the buildings were going to be, so.
Bob, do you want to craft some and/or several amendments? Or do you want this to go back to committee, or what's your preference?
I'm happy to have it go to the floor and, and have the amendments available before our meeting.
I think we can work with Mike to get back to the simple concept that we, I thought left committee with. That would help. And Mike can wrap the words around it.
Bob? I would just ask a question on timing. If this is going to be our next meeting, that would be the 14th?
January 12th.
Of January 12th. Is that on time?
Oh, plenty of time. What I will commit to do is, we can talk about, in fact, I'll, I'll, I'd be happy to work with both of you and review my drafts if that's all right with the rest of the council, because I know that this is something that council member Mark really wanted. Of course, you have comments too. Jim and I can commit to working on some language, and we can kind of review the drafts and then come up with something that I think can go forward to the floor. Happy to do it.
All right, any objection to sending this forward with an understanding there may well be floor amendments? All right. Thank you. 3C, financing for the public training facility. You don't look like Ted Frost.
I just, Ted Frost's younger, uglier brother.
Any questions about 3C? Any objections to sending 3C forward? Thank you. Don't go too far. 3D. Office space city facilities for city-fanated groups.
This is an item that council asked MNF to take a look at, related to occasional requests that council receives related to space in city facilities. So it had gone to MNF to, to look at a policy. And so MNF had asked to come forward to full council. Some of the items that they wanted to look at was that each request should come through the full council, that groups should be affiliated with the city or council initiatives, that requests should include an end date or an annual renewal, and potentially be at least partially funded through the budget process. So that was the recommendation by MNF, and I'll turn it over to the committee if they have anything to add.
Bob Roome?
If someone uses space, do they have to provide proof of insurance?
I'd probably have to ask our risk manager. I think they do. I'm looking at some of my folks that are nodding, and I said generally, yes.
Molly?
I'm not sure about what exactly it means about potentially partially, at least partially funded through the budget process. Show me how that would, or tell me how that would look.
Bob, would you?
For example, it would be Visit Aurora. We have lodges taxed, it's going directly to. Solar tax is on city land. We have made council resolutions or whatever to put that land up. What are some other examples of whatever?
Those are good. I guess I'm wondering about a potential or a future. Outside the city, that's funded by the city, that's not a city agency, would be the Nexus Agencies.
The, what's the Resiliency Center is a dumb one. We put city real estate underneath them. They're not a city organization.
Right, okay, now that's.
But we made a decision among this body here, around this table, that we were going to fund the real estate, the availability.
I guess where I'd start getting worried is a better definition of a group that is, I don't mean in keeping in terms of censoring what somebody's doing, but aligned with city priorities or of our 6 or 12 or 13, whatever priorities. Some or another helping blow the sails forward on those things. I can't imagine a craft club or a quilter's bee or a Girl Scouts, I mean, but there's thousands of groups and organizations that are desperate for space to meet that are great organizations. And I, it seems like we should have a way of whistling those out before they get here.
Bob, the, the policy, as I understand it, the recommendation is, I mean, if the quilting bee came to this city council here, and six or more of us said that fits our priorities, then we might make space available to the quilting bee. So, I mean, it's just, it has to be six elected officials saying, that's a priority, and we're going to dedicate city resources to it. That was the way to weed out, you know, the 20 or 30 or 40 different organizations that might say, we'd like to have a piece of free space or.
Bob Roome?
Well, I, I think people using rooms for meetings is different than what this envisions. This envisions that this would be their space period. And not like, you know, trying to, the quilting group trying to use the conference room or something like that.
Right, no, I, I understand that. I guess, I have a worry, though, about even the quilting group needing full-time office space because they're going to do online sales and they're going to become a commercial venture. And do we really have enough space for city staff that we're going to be doling out?
We say no.
Okay, but how do we know that? I mean, who's going to tell us, tell you guys?
Well, the one thing that's missing here, and I think probably needs to go back to committee if nothing else, or city attorney's office or somewhere, is that if council is comfortable with the idea of policy, there ought to be some written procedures to go along with it. How do you apply, for example? What information do you have to provide? Should it go to a council committee before it comes to study session? And if so, which committee? Should it contain a recommendation from the city manager's office? Probably.
That would address the space issue.
But we don't have that. So I think what is being suggested here by the committee is that council decide if you're comfortable with the policy or not, and if you're comfortable with the policy. with the policy, then we'll ask the manager and the attorney to get together and identify a recommended process, which will come back to us for approval. Am I incorrect in that?
But at that point, the policy will be approved, even if the procedures, the procedures will implement the policy. Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine, it's not like we're rediscussing, reconsidering the policy after we see.
Right, right, I think the question here is approval of the policy. If you say yes, you're comfortable with the policy, then we'll ask them to go work on procedures. If you say you're not comfortable with the policy, then it stops here. Marshall.
I, I'll say I'm not comfortable with the policy. I, I think it sets a precedent, even though it, it only takes six to say yes, I don't know, I am going to feel like Molly, if we could have 100 people, and then we'll let one work down, but won't let another, then feelings are going to get hurt, and we're going to get questioned on what are our motives for saying yes, what are our motives for saying no? This says office space in a city facility, so it could be the library, I guess realistically, it could be here, it could be senior center, I mean, it could be anywhere, so I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Brad?
Well, right now, we have no policy, so if someone were to come in and want office space, we have no criteria by which to say yes or no, so I think this is a, I think developing a policy is what we should do, and then, because, you know, we need to have some criteria, which is kind of what you talked about there, but, you know, because right now, we have, we have nothing.
Barb, Debbie, Molly.
I guess I totally agree, because on some of the stuff that's been mentioned here, you know, those are areas that, that, as Bob said, six members of council, we have agreed to do that, but we really don't have anything to say that if six members of council next week wanted to let the cooking club from whatever come in, they could. So, I, I truly feel we need to get a policy that it has to be something, you know, verbiage in M&amp;F, and I think that's absolutely right there, that in my mind, it has to be something that is enhancing the city of Aurora, and I'm not sure how you put that into, to league leads of whatever.
Debbie, Molly, Bob, Bob Rini. Debbie.
I'm really comfortable with the, the concept of the policy. I agree that we need more specifics before we can approve anything, that I really like the idea of the policy, and I, as long as it, as long as the policy contains wording that if, that whatever we're addressing needs to be, be in line with our, our council priorities, and then the procedures are more specific, I would go with that, but I'm very comfortable with the concept.
Molly.
Thanks, I love policies for anything, so I absolutely am all there about the policy, but I'd like the policy to start with wording that would be an automatic exclusion. I'm seeing in my mind, risk management needing to weigh in on this. What if the group has a lobbying component, or an advocacy component? What if the group is generating revenue, either through the sale of products, or through door-to-door soliciting? There's just all kinds of things that a group could or couldn't do, that are perfectly legitimate for that group to do, that don't belong on city property, and then I wonder about our status as a governmental entity, does our governmental immunity extend to those? Do we, if we have the cooking club over there, and they're selling recipes, and do we charge tax for that? I mean, it's, I just think we need to be real clear about only if, or not at all if, or somehow or another, to weed out the time that it's going to take to go through things that aren't in keeping with the council and the city's priorities. I mean, that's a nice way to spell out what we're doing, and that anybody could say they're doing it, but we wouldn't know if they're. The other huge concern I have is that language about potentially be funded through the budget, so if I hang up a shingle and rent up, and get some space from the city, oh, that was another question, are we charging rent? But if I get my shingle and hang it out here, I've got my question, never mind.
I mean, for the budget.
Yeah, yeah, so then the next two I get to come and say, okay, give me money now, because I've got space in the city. I, I would, I mean, it infers that you have to have both. I know, you should be funded through the city first.
It was intended to be the way.
But you should say that somewhere.
And I would assume the city attorney and the city manager, in bringing back their recommended procedures, they will be answering those questions and making recommendations in each case. Bob, Bob Rini.
I think we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist here. I mean, I can only recall something that's coming to us maybe once every two or three years, and so you deal with it on an ad hoc basis, it just seems like you're inviting people, once you create a policy like this, to come down and start looking around, you know, where's my furniture, and where can I stake my claim, you know?
Bob and Rini.
And I agree with what the mayor said about setting up a policy for how it comes to council, I just wanted to point out that this, this wording says that the group would be affiliated with the city or city initiatives, so it's not just anything, it has to be one of our city initiatives or priorities, and then, you know, on the budget, we were talking about the fact that it, it also has to have a budget allocation from the city council.
Rini.
Just a question, if the council might be, feel better with, rather than a majority approving it, a super majority approve.
Credit.
All right, the, I think there are two questions that we have to answer. One is, one is, do we want the policy? And then, two is what Rini just brought up, whether it should be a majority of council, or a super majority of council making the decision. But let's take the policy question first, because if people say no, we don't have to take up the second one. So, I, again, if you say yes, then you are supporting that the requests come through council affiliated with city or, or council initiatives, including an end date or annual review, and potentially, at least, partially funded through the budget process. The city manager's office and the city attorney's office, if we say yes, will develop procedures, and they will come back to us as well. So, how many are comfortable with the policy? One, two, three, four, five, six, that's more than enough. So, the next question is, in terms of approval, let's, we get the procedures done, and we've got the policy in place, should the approval be by a majority or super majority? So, how, since you raised the question of super majority, we'll ask it that way. How many people would like to see a super majority in terms of approval? One, two, three, four, five, six, that's enough, so it's a super majority. Now, did, I, I should have asked you, and I'm sorry, do you mean eight members?
Yes, eight.
Eight members, sorry, so eight would have to approve it, and I would like to have this come back by the first meeting in February, if we could.
Back to, straight back to study session, right? Not back to.
Yeah, back to study session. All right, okay. Thank you. Three E. Nexus funding recommendations. Mary.
Well, our NEXUS committee had the same task that we've had for the last several years, and it's difficult, because we had over $1 million in requests, and we have the same amount of money that we've had over the last two or three years, which is about $680,000 for the standard NEXUS allotment, and $144,450 for that triage program between Arapahoe House and Aurora Mill Hill. So, we had about $225,000 less money than what we needed to fulfill completely their requests. We looked at their proposals, they were pretty much in the ballpark that they've been over the last few years, so we thought it was prudent just to recommend in-line funding that we've done over the last couple of years. So, I was thinking, maybe you, if you had any questions, we could, between Terry and Nancy and I, we could answer them regarding our recommendations.
Rini.
This, you know, I brought this up a long time ago, but I guess our, this wasn't even considered, that, you know, if the state were to end photo red light, you know, we need to be prepared for these agencies to be supported in some way, and the city manager did say that there was enough to cover, I think, for two years.
Well, the fund balance in the NEXUS program is about, is not enough to cover them for one year.
Okay, so for one year.
But that assumes no continuation of any surcharge funds, as opposed to just the amount that's photo red light. So, that's, you're probably right, it's about two years, if you're just factoring in the photo red light part.
Okay, so I had requested that we, we hold back 5% over what we gave out last year, that 5% of that be held back to be put into an account for a rainy day?
Well, we do have a surplus.
Yes, we've got, you know, a, a fund balance to, to that point, that, that, that does give us sort of a glide path in the event that the state just continues photo red light at the state park. So, we, we do have some fund balance.
I'm good.
All right, Molly.
I love what you did, that's fine, thank you very much, good implementation of a great program. By the third year here, I'm getting concerned about the triage project. I love the money for Aurora Mill Hill, I love the money for Arapahoe House, and I love the outcomes of the program, because it's far better service, both for the officers and for the community, to allow the triage opportunity to divert from the ER into the appropriate program, that's what we're all about. My angst is that we may as well just write a check to the two hospital emergency rooms, because they're the ones that are accruing the savings for not having people tie up the ER and use the staffing inappropriately, but it's still at the right place. So, we're doing, the program is wonderful, but in my opinion, the hospitals need to contribute to the.
There has been one meeting with the hospitals, there is another meeting to be set up with a limited number of hospital representatives, rather than the full array of folks that they brought to the first meeting. Everybody understands the purpose of the second meeting, the purpose of the second meeting is to get the hospitals involved. They understand that, so that, that process is moving, but there was, there was no opportunity during the holiday season to try to get everybody together for another review before the first year, so it will occur after the first year. So, we're working on it, it's just not there yet. Barb.
One of the hard parts is that these, we, some of our platinum members, that the fire. Well, you can use a minute, but there are platinum members that we see a lot, and one of the things, and this is working with the fire department, the hospitals are not going to decrease, and yet if this program wasn't there, there would be an increase. So, part of the problem is trying to get the numbers and the statistics to say, these are ones that are going into the program, that if they weren't going into the program, you would be seeing them, and then the other side of the program is that they are going out and visiting many of the platinum members before they.
Before they think about dialing, yeah.
Before they think about dialing 911, and so, those numbers are very hard to actually quantify, because instead of calling 18 times a month, they're now only calling nine times a month.
Right.
And going, being transferred to the ER. So, it's kind of difficult, and that's what the acute treatment facility is trying to get some of that stuff to get to the hospitals, because in talking, because they have been talking to the hospitals, and the hospitals are basically saying, we don't see any difference, and so, it's kind of a chicken and an egg sort of thing, that you're not seeing them as much, but you're not seeing really a decrease in, in the ER staff.
And I, if I could, Mary, I think is when we brought the pilot concept to council, it was that we'd have a way to, an opportunity to do that counting, and not have to rely on the hospitals to say what's going on, because we'd have our own data.
We do. We do.
Exactly, exactly.
But the hospitals don't agree with it, so.
I get that, but I'm, after two years of a pilot, and I appreciate the meeting, Steve, I think they're absolutely what has to happen, and there's never going to be a formula, or a this many people times this much savings equals this much contribution from the hospital, it ain't that clear, it's just, it isn't the big scheme of things either, but the way this is written, it's two separate questions, so I can support my NEXUS program and not support the funding for the triage, not because I don't approve of the triage program, but until I see the money, honey, it's been three years worth of talk, and I need to see a check before I'm willing to pay their bottom line for city tax dollars, or red light revenue dollars.
Okay, this is a decision that's made here, not on the floor, and there are actually two questions, one for the NEXUS, and one for the triage pilot program. So, let's take NEXUS first. Council approve of the 2015 funding recommendations of the $680,000. Can I see a show of hands? Okay, that's good. Next is the triage pilot program, the request was roughly 180, the recommendation is 144. Can I see a show of hands of those who support the triage program? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And as it relates to the triage program, we'll continue to follow up with the hospitals and see if we can make some progress.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. IGA with Douglas County, with County Line Road, Sampson, Gilch.
What we have going on here is Whispering Pines is a residential community development, and as part of their development, they needed to extend a roadway to make connection to Piney Lake Road slash Powhatan Road, and back in 2006, when this was first started, High Plains Country Club, which is now called Blackstone, was also in the mix here, as far as, we have a roadway here that straddles corporate lines along County Line Road in here, but from this stretch of road here to here is totally within Douglas County. In a spirit of cooperation with Douglas County, we drafted a, an IGA to identify design criteria, and who will basically own and maintain that road, and since the development of Whispering Pines and High Plains Country Club is all in Aurora, we are taking over the ownership and maintenance of that road extension. The road extension from here to here provides a critical connection between Powhatan and, unfortunately, I didn't get my map up here to show, connects to Aurora Parkway as well. So, it provides two points of access, provides a regional kind of connection to help take some traffic off of some of these other roads, or not necessarily to do that, but also just, just provide, you know, better access overall. And with that, staff would really like to see this move forward, and I'll open it up for discussion. Questions? for discussion. Questions?
Thank you. Any objection to moving this forward? All right, good. Thank you. New annexation area proposal.
So, we're in front of you this evening with a proposal for moving ahead with establishing a new annexation area in the city. And first, we provided some mapping. You described an area the last time we discussed this. So, we thought we'd provide some maps around that which will help you with your deliberations. This is basically the depiction of the area that was described at the meeting. It's 54.7 square miles of new annexation area. The proposal would be to, at least at some point, establish in the comprehensive plan an annexation boundary for this area. Just some information about it. This map shows some of the major ownerships within this area. You have the proposed annexation here and the hatching. Further north is the Prosper proposal. And all of the land down here, which is approximately 41 square miles, is the state land board. So, we have about 4.7 miles in the annexation boundary, 7.7 square miles in the Prosper project, and approximately 41 square miles in the state land board holdings. In terms of existing land use, it's mostly all, as you would expect, rural agricultural land. There are four square miles of large lot divisions in the yellow are lots that actually have residences on them. But primarily, this is an area, as you would expect, that's vacant and agricultural land. This shows the school districts. You have a portion in the Aurora Public Schools and a portion in Cherry Creek Schools, and the rest in the Benet School District. Just thinking about, there are different ways to think about the physical characteristics of the land. Certainly, one of them is to think about the watersheds. What the watershed sheds provide is the way that water flows by gravity and, of course, eventually how, that can be useful in thinking about utility planning of all kinds. So, basically, you have three watersheds, Sand Creek, a little bit of the first creek, both of which flow into the existing city, the Box Elder watershed, which flows up towards DIA. In terms of the water districts, it's important to note that there's a large area of land that's primarily coterminous with the state land board holdings that is committed to be served by the Range View Water District. There's a commitment with the state land board. They have a few smaller areas, but the state land board land, there is a commitment to be served by the Range View Water District. And of course, the city is negotiating for a new reservoir within that area. Very interesting is the state land board land. A number of years ago, the city with Rappahoe County and a number of other stakeholders worked with the state land board to establish what's called the stewardship trust for the state land board land that is south of Quincy Road. The intention being that that area would be maintained for conservation in the future. There would be oil drilling and some other uses, but primarily conservation and that there would be potential for development north of Quincy Road. A lot has happened since then. The Quincy Road development deal did not happen. And currently, there is consideration by the state land board to take a couple of areas in their land, which you see in the hatched, out of the conservation designation with the potential for some development. So, more to come on that. The decisions aren't made yet for that land. It will certainly be something that we'll want to follow as a city. So, what we're proposing is to proceed with a study which would establish, ultimately, be intended to establish new annexation boundaries in the comprehensive plan. For various reasons, we're proposing to break it down into phases, phase one, two, and three. I'll go back. The idea being that phase one would include an area, the very specific boundaries to be determined, but at minimum, they would include the proposed annexation area and the Prosper portion of the study area. Phase two would be other areas north of Quincy. And phase three would be the areas of the state land board south of Quincy Road to be undertaken at some point in the future, once the status of that is determined in terms of its potential for conservation. So, I'll go back to the table. So, we're proposing to have a three-phased approach. Each phase would have these components. There'd be a land use component which would look at proposed land use zoning using an approach similar to E470. Would look at any potential for conservation or open space within, large-scale open space within those areas. Would look at phasing and growth management, how to best think about how development might proceed in an orderly fashion. Look at transportation planning, what would the network be for the major streets at a very high level, and other major components of transportation. Look at fiscal impact, what is, what are the financial implications and needs, service needs associated with new areas. And we are asking for a contract project manager position, which would be for the life of this project, to help us manage this. And again, breaking it into phase one and phase two with phase three to be determined in the future. We would suggest that the cost, we've talked with various consultants, the cost of the phase one would be somewhere between 350,000 and 370. Phase two, 220 to 225. I think what we intend to do is keep within this overall amount. I think when we've got into scoping it, the breakdown between the two phases in terms of the cost might shift one way or the other depending on how we draw through the actual boundaries for the phases. And then after that, in addition to that, there would be the water department studies which would have to do with drainage and wastewater and the integrated water plant for a total of, for phase one of 635,000 to 655,000. And phase two, 370 to 375. In terms of the, I don't know if you want me to just jump ahead on, you might have questions for that, or maybe I'll go ahead to the, to this part, and then we can go back if you would like. But essentially, we're talking about phase one being a 2015 project with the intention of completing a comp plan amendment, addressing the annexation proposal by the end of 2015. And then with the second phase being a 2016 project. So, that's basically the proposal. And the question is, does council wish to proceed with the phase study approach that we've recommended?
Harb and Bob Room?
I guess yes. My comment or question is, because we're including it, and I read in some of the backup that we're not going to take water off necessarily off the Range View property. So, why are we, why are we doing so much on the Range View property? Because my issue is, yes, we may need it for a reservoir, but we don't, I don't, we would definitely have to change our policy if we took water from there.
And I don't know if Marcia, you want to help me with that some?
Yeah, the phased approach, the Range View area is actually not until phase three, and so, there are no costs or anything associated with looking at that.
The only Range View part that would be included is that area in Warren, south of Quincy.
Right, okay.
It was part of the original development proposal. But all the areas south of Quincy is not in phase.
Yeah, okay. So, the whole water, because, you know, we're not going to be, because that's a whole nother policy issue as far as that whole water stuff.
That's right. Bob Room and Bob Legere?
How old are, excuse me, how old are our existing master, utility master plans that you're going to be updating? Are they in need of being updated anyway?
They are actually, the integrated water master plan process is underway today. That's the reason we, and so, it's our store water master plan. And those two are in process as we speak, and will be adopted, the waste water master plan, you know, within the next probably year.
So, this would be just an add-on to those updates?
Some portion of this would be added on to those.
Bob Legere?
So, and I have some questions on the, I presume we're, my question is about the boundaries. And I know that we extended it to Quail Run Road because there's going to be an interchange someday at Quail Run and I-70. But, I also thought that we were going to go up to I-70. So, what did I miss that took that mile from I-70 to Sixth Avenue out of the picture?
This is already in the annexation area of the city.
Oh, it's already, okay. That would explain it. So, I just wanted to add a comment. In looking at this map and the nature of the parcels between Imboden Road and Quail Run Road, I know a bunch of those owners on those little tiny rectangles, and we would have a firestorm like we've never seen, once they get wind of the fact that we're, they're in Aurora's annexation boundary area. So, it's just a thought to consider, if we're proceeding with this, if we have the two miles along I-70, and we drop it over to Imboden Road instead of Quail Run Road, you eliminate all of that and still address the individuals, entities that have submitted the application. So, it's just something to consider, looking at that map with the yellow rectangles up there.
Would you put up the calendar of activities for me?
This one?
Yeah.
Back, oh, sorry.
There you go. There you go.
The Dr. Cog Urban Growth Area Amendment doesn't start until, phase one doesn't start until July next year. And then, there's a six-month gap. Does that mean that there's no action taken on phase one until we go through phase two?
Well, I have to tell you, I think at this point, we include Dr. Cog as an uncertainty, and we would not necessarily consider that part of the consulted project. That would be work that staff and city council would need to do. And it may take longer. I, I'm afraid it's just a bit uncertain at this point. With the go-ahead, I think that would be one of the immediate things to explore would be to figure out how we would address that.
But is there anything to prohibit, since it's going to be out of, since it's going to be independent, is there anything to prohibit starting the discussions earlier?
I, I'm sorry. Bob?
I have a meeting on January 13th to just start understanding what the Dr. Cog process is with several other people to just give in front of Brad Calford and some of the other Dr. Cog staff to, I don't know that it's necessarily giving the ball rolling on the process, but it's understanding the process.
Is there any problem with having city staff involved with that, some out there?
Not at all.
Okay, go back to the map with what Bob Legere was talking about.
See if I can get this.
There we go. So, Bob, basically, you are talking about that area between Jewel at Alameda and Imboden and Quail Run. Is that it?
Did I point to the right?
That is correct. And if you go, go one map to the left, if you could, Bob.
Okay.
One.
Or the other one?
No, the one with the owner parcels.
Sorry.
This one actually shows even more so. I mean, we have people that have, they didn't build a house yet, but they have that little parcel on, they think they're going to build a house on it. Yeah, that's, that's the area there.
So, your recommendation would be just to move that entire north-south line one mile to the west?
That is correct. From Alameda, I mean...
You could cut it off here. You could actually do this too.
Bob Room?
Yeah, but I mean, we don't annex property unless they come in and ask to be annexed. So, if there are a lot of people that own lots out there, there's nothing on, maybe they'd like the option, being able to annex it as opposed to trying to drill wells and that whole thing.
Bob Legere?
Who's going to explain that to them?
Well, that's what we got staff for.
Yeah, I think it's a Dr. Cog.
Well, again, this, pray.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, or I don't know what those folks out there think about being annexed into the city. They may like it with the water for the police and fire, or they may not. I mean, maybe, Bob, you have some more insight, but I don't know. Hard for me to say that they'd be negative unless you know something I don't.
Well, you're... Well, they're out there because they don't want to be in the city. I mean, that's...
Does anyone remember the town of Foxfield yet before it was in the city of Aurora?
Right.
And the reaction they had to the perceived threat that we were going to annex them? That's exactly what we're going to have here.
Harb?
Well, I guess there's, and you're correct, Bob. I mean, everything that we went through regarding Foxfield, we even sent them registered letters saying we weren't going to annex them. They didn't believe us. I don't, I don't know if we need to go that far east. I mean, I can see, I can see it both ways. They may have never even thought of the fact that they hypothetically could be annexed in the city of Aurora. It's part of just a study area. That's all it is, is that you have that potential. But, that's kind of a lot of users out there, or small parcels, it looks like. So, I have no problem going a little further west.
Well, again, this doesn't go to the floor or anything. Whatever you want to decide, you decide here for the purposes of initiating the effort. So, Marcia?
Wouldn't we want to get the whole Prosper instead of just two-thirds of it?
Well, again, the part that it's up north of that line on Sixth Avenue is already in our study area. This is identifying additional study area. So...
So, the north part is already there?
The north part's already there. So, we're taking in the rest.
They could come in today and ask for annexation. They could come in today and ask for annexation.
Randy?
Why don't we just make the line straight and take off the section to the east? Yeah.
Say again?
Just make the line straight and take the section to the east, Doc.
Just stop at Quail Run Road.
Right.
Well.
Bob?
I, I think that the idea there was we wanted to have control of Quail Run Road in those two miles from Alameda to I-70, because there would be an interchange there somewhere, or at least the potential for those owners to annex.
Okay, so.
And have control of it.
So what about going two sections, the two sections just to the end of that 35 there? Is it Cabanoff?
Manila Road.
I can't, I don't know, I can't read what the road is.
Well, Manila. Let's be clear, Bob, are you talking about the stuff that's out, way out east? Or are you talking about the stuff that is between Alameda and Jewell, further west? Which are you talking about?
Well, I, I wasn't speaking the farthest east, but that's a good point, if, as Randy just said, if, if it stopped at Manila, from I-70 to Alameda, along Manila, and then it went west to Emboden Road, and then dropped south.
So your suggestion is to take off the two areas that are on that map that are small, small ownerships?
Correct, heavily populated with small owners.
Otherwise, the lines on the map you're comfortable with.
I would be.
Yeah.
I'd go along with that.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, Bob Legere's suggestion is then that we would take off those two areas. Bob, you shouldn't have left the map.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there you go.
There you go.
My thumbs to be.
Just cut out the four square miles.
Your choices are the map as it is, or taking off the hot, the smaller lot of ownerships between Alameda and Sixth, the far east end, and taking out those ownerships between Alameda and Jewell further west, and basically running the line north-south along Emboden rather than Quail Run.
To about Jewell and then go back east on Jewell?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are your choices. So let's take Bob's proposed amendment first. Everybody understand?
Yep.
All right, how many here in favor of Bob's amendment? One, two, three, four, plenty. All right, that's it. All right, please modify the maps accordingly.
Yes.
And please make sure that you have the modified maps available for this meeting that Councilmember Roth is going to have. Anything else on this issue? Molly?
We modified the map, but I didn't get where we actually did the yes or no question. In the backup, or did I miss that?
We haven't done it yet.
We haven't done it yet.
Oh, you, you want the yes or no question on everything?
No, no, I just, are we, whether?
I thought we answered the yes or no question at the last meeting.
Okay.
I think we did, we answered the question at the last meeting, and you were, you were, you were nursing your back, I think.
Um, it's just, there's not even, nothing written here where it says questions for council?
Yes, right here.
There is. Okay, so I thought there was a question about the phases of the study.
Well.
Because it's not on the page.
That's not mine, but let's ask it.
I know, no, it's not on the pager version?
Have you seen your show of hands a while ago with the recommendation? Okay, that's, all right. Okay, Council reports, CML National League of Cities. Anybody have a, a pause?
Just a question.
All right.
For Roberto, I think, if he's here, or maybe Skip. So traditionally, we've gone back to Washington in March and visited with our delegation.
We're going to bring that up at first meeting in, in January.
Okay, because I've already made my plane reservations and my hotel based on our custom from years past, so.
Well, you may be going, anyhow. You may not be the only one, there may be others who have to go. We thought we were going to be really tight on time tonight, so we don't have all the information that we need. You guys have been very closed-lipped this evening, so as a result, you saved us about 45 minutes. The good news is, we'll get upstairs sooner for the executive session, and we probably won't need the one after the meeting, that's the good news. The bad news is, we can't talk about that right now, because we don't have everything here.
Okay.
Okay? Roberto was good, wanting to gather a bunch of information and have it in the backup for everyone.
For next, for January?
For January, first meeting in January.
Okay.
The 12th.
Got you.
All right, legislative updates. Mayor Protem Hunterhold.
What would be my update? No, we're, we haven't been able to get a meeting scheduled with Representative Fields, but I think we've met with everyone else, and so the new committee begins in January, and that's it, that's all I have.
Great. Any questions? Molly?
In the CML newsletter one of these days, there was reference to the CML initiating a bill, one about the urban renewal process, but the other to create equal opportunity for local citing and enforcement issues for beer, wine, and spirit sales rooms as compared to all other duly licensed establishments for on-premises consumption. I'm wondering if we're paying attention to this, and if we know how it would impact Aurora.
We are, this is, the intent of this is potentially, it's essentially microbreweries who are adding caprooms adjacent to their facilities, they're basically manufacturing facilities that currently do not have local ability to review those in terms of the zoning chain, so they could have what some people would consider a bar, they would be opening up as a caproom adjacent to a neighborhood or adjacent to the area that may be sensitive. CML's tracking or trying to have legislation that would allow local, or support legislation that would allow local governments to have a review of those sites, if and when they have some particular impacts, as long as the council has an opportunity to take a look at those. This is all just in response to a lot of microbreweries, especially in Denver, that are opening up caprooms that really don't have any type of regulation right now in terms of how they're zoned or how they're operated, hours, traffic, et cetera, so it's trying to close that, that loophole.
Or trying to make it local?
Trying to make it, well, allow locals to be able to have their regular zoning regulation imposed on, on those. So the Craft Brewers Association, all those folks are being consulted as well, they don't want to create any impacts, but right now it's kind of a loophole.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Dr. Cog?
I handed out this 11 by 17, Mac Callison sent out an email a week and a half or so ago, kind of talking about the projects that we got funded, but I wanted to just take a couple of minutes and, and explain what, what the process is and how we got these. So the, the portion that circled in the upper right-hand corner of the first page, that's in thousands of dollars, so there's $131 million in, in Phase One, and Phase One and Phase Two of the funding for Dr. Cog's projects, Phase One is a set criterion that each project is graded, and it's really cut and dried. Phase Two is based more on equity, so smaller communities get more of a fair shake that might but not be able to submit projects that are, that would qualify on the criterion and the, the grading system. So this is just the Phase One portion of, of the funding, and as you can see, it's $131 million, $118,000. And I've highlighted in pink the areas that each municipality can submit a project or projects in. So there's bike and ped, transit service, transit passenger, roadway capacity, roadway operational, roadway reconstruction, studies, and other enhanced projects. So those are the areas where, where all the municipalities can submit, and again, there's 53 municipalities that are, that are represented in Dr. Cog, and so I wanted to point out that in this phase, if you, the yellow highlight, the top, of the top seven projects that were funded for bike and ped projects for, for Aurora City, Aurora. So we did extremely well, kudos to staff, and as I, there was a little bit of browsing at the Dr. Cog table, that we had four out of seven, and, yeah, and that's just one of the.
Okay, so I take everything back.
You can whine, but Aurora got four out of seven, they got lots of funding.
You're doing a great job, Rob.
So anyway, I want to point that out, and this, this is staff, this is the means. That's all I had.
Thanks, sir. Fitzsimmons redevelopment authority update, Councilmember Monier is here. I think it probably would be valuable, though, to say that, that Councilmember Verzens and Councilmember Monier and I, who represent the city on the FRA board, have had some discussions about trying to make sure that when all of the various studies that are going on right now, which include the entire campus master plan, the TOD study, and a housing study, when all of those are completed, and that they've been joined together and massaged, and everybody understands what they all mean or don't mean, and how they're all put together, that we would make sure that we would have a full briefing for council, and I don't just mean five, 10, 15 minutes, I mean more like an hour, hour and a half if necessary, on either a special study session agenda or a workshop agenda, so that we can have the right people here to provide the right information and go through everything that needs to be addressed. So that's in process, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah.
Other than that, if you haven't been over there recently, the hundred and round numbers, 115,000 square foot new building is coming along very, very well, and will be finished in time for the new school year to begin in the summer, so that'll be good news. E-470, oh.
What is the impact on the flap around the VA, the VA, and who's building and who's getting paid, and what's going on?
The Kiwan Turner Group is supposed to be back at work this week. The VA, Congress, and Kiwan Turner have all agreed on the Corps of Engineers coming in to do some kind of limited oversight, at least initially. They've agreed on the amount of money it takes to get back to work and do the foreseeable future. Evidently, there's still some discussion related to what may turn out to be the last $150 to $200 million project, but all agreed to put that off and take it up in the next Congress. But they should, they should be out there literally working, they should be out there today.
Thank you.
Bob?
Just as a site comment on that, so the, the company I work for is a sub-subcontractor doing a small portion of work out there, and Kiwan Turner did send out letters to all subcontractors this week telling them, we're, we're back, we're back in the saddle, and you know, you can report back to the site, so.
Bob, sometime in next spring, it might be helpful to do a little bus trip out to Fitzsimmons and go through it and talk about what's going on and what's planned for each individual part that's left, because, you know, it gets kind of confusing after a while,
And maybe we tie that into the presentation, it's a good idea.
Barb?
Maybe that's where we have a workshop.
Maybe that's where we have a workshop.
You know, out at the FRA or someplace out there.
Yep.
That actually has a workshop there.
We could do that, or.
That's a restaurant at the golf course.
Or the Wellness Center, or.
Wellness Center, there's lots of places out there that have a workshop.
Okay. E-470, Councilmember Brum, I'm glad you're here, you're on here.
Been to a meeting in three months, so.
Nothing new, other than they continue to set records on traffic, so the fact that 225 opened, which some thought might cut down on traffic on E-470, has not, and they will be, in their 2015 budget, which has been approved by the E-470 Board, there's $4 million for Sixth Avenue in their 2015 budget. The verbal comment from the executive director was that's $2,000 grant, $2,000 loan, so, you know, we got to work that out, but nonetheless, it's been approved in the budget. And many, 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 many years ago, when the ultimate configuration was identified for E-470, or what everybody thought would be the ultimate configuration, there were several future interchanges that would be added. And the first one on that ultimate configuration that was approved, and is now open and operating, was Quebec at the north end, E-470 and Quebec at the north end. It opened up, I think, 1st of December, and they're running it free for a month. In Aurora, the one future interchange that is on that ultimate configuration is 48th Avenue, so eventually, there will be a 48th Avenue interchange, unless we want to trade it for something else. Okay? AEDC?
They have exceeded their goals for jobs for the year. I'll have the final number in January, when they add their December totals to that.
Can I?
Debbie?
Who's the goal for AEDC?
The board?
The board. And how is that, how, how do they do that?
That I don't know.
Okay.
It's virtually through a recommendation from staff.
Okay.
And then the board decides on the recommendation.
Correct.
I mean, in its simplest form, that's it. Accelerate Colorado?
The dates for going back to DC have been announced, June 9th through the 11th is the, is the DC curve, and then they will be doing, working on what we're going to be discussing, going back, the issues for DC.
225 fast tracks update, again, Councilmember Monier is here. Mac, do you want to step in?
Certainly, we're council members. We prepared a summary on the recent activities. Work continues, starting over south from the Isla Station. There are 10 photos included in, in the packet as well. Isla Station platform canopies are being constructed, the overhead power poles, part of the overhead catenary system is, is, is beginning to replace. Continued trackway work, finishing the formal trackway up adjacent to Abilene Street, up to the Mississippi Avenue rail bridge approach is underway. The staining of the, of the girders and piers for all the rail bridge, bridges are, is underway now. As, as we work continuing north, efforts are, are underway in terms of placing the north sidewalk curb gutter and, and retaining walls on exposition, on the north side of exposition, working from Abilene East to Sable, that work is underway. I might add that exposition is open to traffic, one lane in each direction, and left turns at selected points, so access to those businesses is being delivered, and we deliberately identified a no-work construction area through the, through the holiday season for, to aid in ease of access for the, for the retail establishments in the immediate metro center area there. As we work north at our Metro Center Station, you can see the drainage work, the. As we work north at our Metro Center Station, you can see the drainage work, the storm sewer drainage work has started with the large pipe being placed in that area there. As we continue north over Tolgate Creek, just north of 13th Avenue, south of Colfax, those girders are being placed to accomplish a crossing from the east side of Tolgate Creek immediately adjacent to 225 to the west side, and then connecting into the Colfax Station Bridge, that's the rail bridge station there. And then work continues north adjacent to Fitzsimmons Parkway, through an attitude alignment up to Peoria, with activities on retaining walls, station excavation and placement, and then the great separation of the rail bridge over Peoria from the north side of Fitz Parkway to the west side of Peoria, and then over, accomplishing a span over Stan Creek at that point. Photos are in place on that. Lastly, the canopy structures are being placed for the East Corridor rail line at the Peoria Station. So we're available for any additional questions and information.
Molly?
Compliments to you for all of that, several of the people that have written me Christmas cards have said, "Did you know you're building light rail out there? It looks really interesting." So compliments on that.
Team effort.
There you go. But I was really impressed today, at least I think I saw the existing train cars that are running, whatever they did, but they're all red and green, painted or decorated or something? Has anybody else noticed that? Am I the only one imagining it? I'll have to look again, but I was coming down 225 with Parker.
Okay, they do wrap those...
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty cool. Maybe we finally got some.
Any other questions you've got?
I have a Visit Aurora update.
Oh, okay, yes.
It wasn't on the list, but I got one. Gary Weed, who's the president and CEO of Visit Aurora, and Tom Barrett, who runs our park recreation open space department, accepted the International Softball Association Senior Softball USA Complex of the Year for the sports park. The sports park was presented, the award based on an annual event developed by Visit Aurora and pros called the Aurora Mountain Championships. And Visit Aurora was awarded a $20,000 grant for 2015 from the Colorado Tourism Office to assist with marketing and advertising, and this will allow Visit Aurora to expand its annual advertising campaign. Two events that Visit Aurora has brought to Aurora coming up in 2017. First one's this Equine Assisted Growth and Learning Association. It's coming in March of 2017, it will be 400 attendees and over 1,200 room nights at our partner hotels. And then the second one is the Society for the Prevention and Advancement of the Harmonica Convention.
What's also spaces?
In August of 2017, that'll be about 350 people and 1,000 room nights at our hotel, so... Yeah, let's go for the tubas back, so that's the Visit Aurora update.
Preserving.
Okay. Anything else for study session, Bob?
Mayor, I think it was at our last meeting, there was a suggestion, I don't know if Councilmember Quail Run made it or not, but it was the concept of having a trip to DC that wasn't part of NLC.
That's what we're going to talk about on January 12th.
Okay, great. I just hope to see that date on the calendar to see if we can...
Yep. Okay, we were to have an executive session beginning at 6:00, and then another executive session after the regular meeting. We have a, you got a hold of Rita?
Yes, Rita is on her way.
Okay. What we're going to try to do is handle both things before the regular meeting, so we can get out. But the easiest way to do that would be to have the DIA executive session first, and the personnel executive session second. So we're going to give you 20 minutes to get upstairs, take a bathroom break, whatever you need, but we're going to call the executive session to order at 6:45, and we're going to start...
5:45.
I'm sorry, 5:45, and we're going to start with the DIA issue first. So a little change in plan, but we'll try to get everything done early. Thank you.